Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. Called a meeting to order, being that this is the first meeting we've had since the passing of away of our friend Paul Draper, I'd like to have a moment of silence, just in memory of Paul. Thank you. We have a short agenda this week, and there's only a few items that are marked for discussion. We'll start with the first, with the first page. If there's, there's nothing marked for discussion by staff, but if there's anything anyone would like to point out or discuss, please say so at this time. Okay, same with the second page. Okay, and there's one item on page three before we get to the regular agenda. Okay, so then we'll start with the regular agenda under Administrative Services. We have some items marked. Number one, who's, who's leading that discussion?
I'll take that. So in the memo was provided, the options available to council, how to fill the vacancy, the first being via appointment. This you would direct us to publish notice of, that you wish to fill the position via appointment. The appointment must occur within 60 days of the vacancy. The appointee would hold the seat until the November 2021 election, at which time the seat would be put on the ballot to fill a vacancy, and then that, the elected person would then hold the seat for the remaining of the term, which would be November 2023. The other option would be special election. The council said this would most likely take place in late March or early April, and the elected person would hold the seat until the end of the term, which would be November 2023. Estimated cost for this was between $17,500 and $30,000. If appointment is chosen, citizens can also file a petition, and there would need to be 708 signatures, and that is to be filed with the city clerk within 14 days after the appointment. So I think we're just looking for kind of council direction, and that would dictate what we have on the agenda for Thursday.
Thank you for providing thorough information on that, and we can start with the discussion and see what, what the thoughts are up here on how to fill the vacancy. Anyone, go ahead, Ms. Gudela.
Sure. I think it makes sense to do an appointment. We've done them the last, I don't know, I can think of at least three times. It's always worked out well. It's a fair opportunity. We usually have a decent pool of candidates. I know that last time we did it, I did have some suggestions if we go that route again in terms of how we question and answer, and that kind of thing, but that's a different discussion. But I would not be in favor of going out for an election as long as people are interested, and I believe that people are.
Anyone else?
I would, I would agree with Renee as well. I think I'm comfortable with doing it by appointment. I think that's certainly been a valid method that we've used in the past, and certainly we've gotten some very good candidates through that selection process.
I agree, given that it would be only until the next election, if it were, if it were for the full, you know, almost four years, I would favor an election. But if it's only until the next election, I think it makes sense to appoint someone.
I agree.
Okay. We have a comment from our council?
It just sounded like maybe there was some confusion. If you did it by special election, it would fill out the entire term until 2023.
Correct.
Okay. It sounded like that's not...
Well, no, the appointment would only be until the next election if it was by appointment.
The appointment would be correct.
Yeah. So because that's how it works, I'm comfortable personally with, with filling the vacancy with appointment. If it were going to be an appointment for the entire four years, I would want to have an election.
Okay. Yes?
Could I just ask a question? If there was a, I just want to make sure that we're clear with this. If there was any type of election that would come up, that would involve the city that at that time then would come up to the ballot, it's not, it doesn't go up through the next election, it would be anytime the city would be on the ballot.
That's my understanding. So until there's a special election for another reason for the city, or the next general election, or the next city election in 2021.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Are they clear? Okay. Looks like we have a consensus, I think. Okay, anything further on that subject?
I just, what was the next step then if we all agree on appointment?
So on Thursday, there would be an agenda item to direct staff to publish notice of intent to fill the vacancy by appointment. We would publish notice in the paper. Similar to last time, people would submit a resume or a letter of application, and then they attend the next council meeting, there's interviews, and then the voting takes place by council.
So every, so it would be the next...
It would be the March, the second meeting in March.
Continue March.
Nineteenth, I think? I can't see that far.
Nineteenth.
So we would have the letters of application due the week prior, and they would go out in the packets for your review prior to the meeting.
Yeah.
When would it get posted in the paper? And then how long is the...
Has to be no, or at least four and no more than 20 days prior to the appointment. So we would have it published March 5th, with the due date of March 12th, and then at the March 19th meeting would be the interviews and the decision. And that's just due, Marion Times only publishes on Thursdays, so that's where those dates came from.
Okay. Anything else on that topic? Move on to number three. Is that you, Mr. City Manager?
That is indeed. So on, if you don't mind, I'll discuss this one and number five. I'll start with number three and then move right into that. We will have the public hearing regarding the new step for the budget approval process that was changed legislatively last year. We have to have a second public hearing now, which is related to the maximum property tax dollars that the city could potentially levy. In prior discussions with the city council, we had published that at a higher number than what we had anticipated to do for the actual budget, knowing that with the legislature in session, if they did something like back off on the commitment to the commercial and industrial backfill or something like that, the council would have the tools to be able to adapt to that. By the time we hit the second public hearing for the formal approval of the budget in March, we'll have at least a better idea of where they may be heading with that. City council always has the option, as we discussed before, to scale back on expenses or scale back on the tax rate after the second public hearing, but you cannot increase other one. So it was intended to give the council maximum flexibility. One thing that I would note, that you may hear some feedback from the public if you haven't already, the form that the state provided to publish does not include the debt service levy, so the dollar amount figures that are included there, included there are exclusive of that. Personally, I'm not particularly happy with that, because it makes it look like the property tax rate is going to be $12 and change, and if I'm not familiar with how property taxes work and I look at that, and then my property tax bill comes out with debt service included, and it's 1422 or 1423, I'm going to feel like I've been misled. I don't know why they did it that way, or how come the instructions came out like that, but there is no spot on that form to include the debt service levy. So what was published was reflective of the $12 and change, not the full levy amount that would be done after the next public hearing.
Well, in our, in our notice of the public hearing, can't we clarify that, or make sure that the right information is included?
It's a very specific form that actually has to go in the paper for the publication.
We can add...
We can't add to it? We can't...
There's not a spot for it.
Or in the...
Can we put in asterisks and send them somewhere else to get the fine print?
Yeah, we will take a look at that for next year, and I'm pretty sure that the Department of Management has received a lot of feedback about the way that form is constructed, and actually I can guarantee that they have.
Well, we can at least make sure that the Gazette and the Marion Times have the appropriate information so that the better numbers, more, more accurate numbers can be communicated, at least have them available to the public.
They're both represented in this room right now, so they both have the information.
Hint, hint, please.
Okay, well, we want to make sure that everyone has the correct information and no one feels like they're being misled.
Yeah, we don't want them to think there's a huge decrease coming up.
Yeah, and knowing that the city council holds office hours over at the library and folks ask you questions, if that comes up, I wanted you to have the information.
Okay.
Okay.
So with the next...
Yeah, go ahead.
Moving on then to number five with the coming budget. We had sent out a memo to the council with what the revised budget looks like, very little in the way of changes that we're proposing to it. One piece that did come up, as we continued to have discussions with Cedar Rapids, was related to public transportation expenses. When we did the initial draft of the budget and did that initial tax rate, Cedar Rapids had not yet held their budget work sessions. We knew they were going to be proposing moving forward with adding a couple of hours a night to their transit system. So they're, instead of ending at six o'clock, they're going to be ending at eight o'clock. And so with us, because we have a separate route, we have the option of whether or not we extend those extra hours. When they did their initial survey for potential ridership, Marion's numbers were not strong at all. About a half dozen had indicated that they would use it. I think the question we have is whether or not this is one of those chicken and egg scenarios, that once it's available and people start to use it, do they start to expect it? For us, I think the worst-case scenario is having somebody use the, that's not aware of it, of the difference in hours, use the service in Cedar Rapids, come over to the transfer point at Twixtown at 6:45 when it's too below out, and not have a way to get home, because our system isn't running. So we did put a proposal out to add a little bit to the transit levy. It adds about 1.7 cents, I believe, overall, to the potential property taxes, to provide about $30,000 for what we would term last mile service, in the event that we do have riders that would need some way to be able to make it home. We have met with neighborhood transportation services, there's some interest there. We could also look at perhaps a contract with private providers. If Cedar Rapids makes the change, their change wouldn't occur until July 1, and so we'd have some time to get our system in place. But for the amount of riders that we were anticipating that would use the service in Marion, point-to-point seems to make more sense than adding $75,000 a year to operating expenses for that extra two hours at night. And going in with kind of our toe in the water would give us a year to see how the system works. We would probably not recommend making a change right away on July 1, but see what the ridership looks like, so we'd have some kind of an estimate of demand, and we could know what, how, how we needed to adapt to it in the future.
May I ask a question on that?
Go ahead.
Thanks. When Ms. Fisk presented recently, I thought we were funding, funding her operations so that she could do that later evening coverage. Does this not overlap with that?
It does not. Their, their service that they provide is point-to-point, but it's from like residence to destination. So from home to business, it's intended to support workers, and so it's not general public transportation where you're responding from a fixed point. They have looked at a, a different service altogether, which would actually be app-based. It's kind of novel, I would say, in that they would use an app, and then people would sign up with the app, and it would actually build custom routes that they could use their buses. But it's not fully developed yet enough for us to be able to say that that's the way that we would go.
Okay, thank you.
So overall, this is what our route looks like. I don't, I can't recall the last time we've shown you the route for the circulator in Marion. One advantage that we do have is that by having our own individual route, we don't necessarily have to follow along with Cedar Rapids. Other communities like Hiawatha, where the route into Hiawatha is part of the Cedar Rapids existing route, just simply have to go along with the extra two hours, so we have a little bit more flexibility. So with our, what we're spending on transit right now, in the current budget year, it's $411,000. Next year, it's projected at $433,000. And then Horizons, the NTS that Councilwoman Gudela was referencing, is projected to go up to $33,000. This is what our ridership figures looked like from September of 2018. This is just a snapshot. I know it's a little tough to see, but our peak times tend to be 12:30, 1:30, and then 2:30 in the afternoon. There is a peak in the mornings, presumably with people going to work as well. But you can see as you get towards 6:30 at the end, it really tails off. Now, in conversations with Cedar Rapids Transit, one of the things that they noted is that people don't use the bus if they know they can't make it back. So you're not going to hop on one of the last buses to go down to downtown Cedar Rapids from Twixtown if you know there's not going to be a route that you can get back on. So they're, they do see a significant tailing off in ridership in the last couple of, of times that they run. So here's a breakdown of what the different changes look like. Obviously, if we don't make a change, then it's status quo with the budget, that's our least expensive option. We don't then have any on-demand options for late night, and we do have that potential that someone could end up coming in, and, you know, if there's no private providers around, could end up stuck at Twixtown. If we were to expand Route 20, which is the Marion route, that would be anticipated to be between $72,000 and $75,000 to add that, those two hours every night. We're estimating at this point that we should be able to do the nighttime hours point-to-point for around $30,000. So that's the, hence the amount that we would recommend to the council that we at least consider for the budget. Impact on the property tax levy. The prior instruction from the council was that you wanted to see the property tax levy come through at flat, that's the 1422. This is actually a little bit higher, coming in at 1424, for, because there's a little wrinkle on the valuations that I will get to a little bit later. But overall, it's an increase of a couple of pennies to fund that difference. Why would we recommend that? One, it's an operating cost, and I'm not inclined to ever recommend to the city council that we fund operating expenses out of reserves. I don't mind doing targeted use of reserves or strategic use of reserves to do things like buy equipment, like we're planning on doing for the fire station, but for something that's an operating cost, when you have the ability to levy for that operating cost, I would much rather do that. That way, you're getting closer to achieving a structurally balanced budget where the in-and-out are equal, and not drawing against your reserves for something that you're going to be levying for in the future. It would also then position us if some, none of the other options work out, and we decide in the budget next year that we do want to add the extra couple of hours, because we see a lot of increase in ridership, and it makes more sense to just add two hours to the circulator. Then we're positioned to not see a $75,000 jump all in one budget year. To some of Councilman Jensen's comments, I know he would indicate a strong preference for having smaller incremental changes rather than one big change hitting all at the same time. So that was part of the other thought behind it. So with the proprietary funds, we had proposed an increase to the sanitary sewer fee at 10 cents per thousand on the variable charge, looking at some increases with, to our costs with Cedar Rapids. We are going to be doing some additional research over the next couple of months to take a closer look at this. We're seeing higher-than-expected flows in a couple of locations, and have some due diligence to do to track down what could potentially be causing that. If we were to go with the amount, for example, that Cedar Rapids is recommending, that 10 cents would look more like 30 cents. We're not recommending that at this point, but just want to let the council know that while the budget right now is built around the 10 cents, when we get into June and we're actually making the change, we may have to look at a little different number than that based on what they're telling us. But we have some things that we need to reconcile before, between their flow meters and ours, and some things that we're seeing, particularly on the Squaw Creek line, where we're seeing higher-than-expected flows. If it's not a permanent change, like if the flows are not due to growth or new users out there, but it's rather a problem with the system where you've got groundwater coming in, we can eliminate that, and there's no reason to increase the rate for flow that we can get out of the system. So we're going to keep tracking that down. We also then have the hookup fees. This is something that other communities in the metro area charge. We are looking at equalizing with Cedar Rapids, which would be a $2,000 per connection capacity charge. Based on historical numbers of permits issued, we would expect that to bring in between $300,000 and $310,000 per year. Solid waste, again, we had made in the solid waste utility a recommendation to the council for a $2 per month increase. This is to fund the increased operating costs of the utility and to position us for the new fleet purchase, get everything ready for eventually making the transition over to doing an automated fleet. Again, I hate to say it, but this is an area that might change between now and then. Public Services Director Miller has met with the Solid Waste Agency, and it's, they are bidding recycling services right now. Recycling is a very volatile market, and we don't know what their new contract will be. There's a potential there that it could be significantly higher than what they're paying right now, and if that's the case, then it gets passed on as tipping fees. We don't always have the option to just curtail recycling on some products and landfill them instead. Like, for example, excuse me, for example, there's a ban on landfilling cardboard at the Solid Waste Agency. So we don't have the option of switching from one to the other. So if the price on that were to double or triple for cardboard recycling, that gets passed on. I believe their bids are due in May, so we will know before we hit June and July what we would need to do to adapt for that. But didn't think at this point, again, that it was prudent to make a change to the recommended budget until we actually know what those numbers look like.
Mr. Jensen?
Yeah, during our budget meeting, we had quite a bit of discussion on this item about looking at spreading this $2 increase out, maybe at 7120, looking at only a dollar. So what was the evaluation of how that would work and how those dollars would impact the budget?
Ryan, did you want to address the Public Service Commission recommendation?
Yep, there's some ideas on how to do that, and we had a couple of options, but last week after meeting with the Solid Waste Agency, we might have to throw those options out the door. Essentially, what's going on is that their contract for recycling services is up this year. They're going out for bid, the bids are due back in May. Director McShane out there has indicated, at a minimum, we'll see a $20 to $30 increase per ton on recycling. What that means, we're going to pay over $100 a ton to recycle. And right now, as a region, all of us are trying to wrap our heads around this. That alone will be a significant increase. You're looking at $90,000 to $100,000 in a, in a tipping fee increase for us alone. So we'll know more, I think, in the next month or two, and we understand the concerns of spacing those increases out, and I think there's options for doing that, but these increases have not, I mean, these are just operational needs that we're going to have to do, and we don't want to increase, you know, everything at once, but we're going to have to look at some hefty increases this year for that utility, just because of the situation we're in, so.
So we do have the flexibility that if those tipping fees do not get increased to the level that they're being possibly discussed or anticipated, that we could drop the 1750 down by July 1 anyway? If, if some of the other factors come into play that you're talking about?
Yeah, there, there's some room there to, I think, and this is something, I want to get with Zach and Lon and really look at this closer, there's some room. If we didn't have to worry about a tipping fee increase, there's probably some flexibility on those rate increases, but if we were to realize the tipping fee increase that's being communicated to us at this point, probably not.
I understand that part.
Yep.
Okay.
Then also on the urban forest utility, with this one, we have not made any changes or recommendations as well. The staff recommendation was to increase the monthly rate from the current 225 to $3 per month. That's to help make sure that we cover the costs that we're incurring in the utility right now. We've actually intentionally drawn against the reserves this year, but we have seen it ramping up in our efforts with the ash borer, and if we want to make sure that we're actually adequately replacing trees, we do need to look at changing how we fund those. Unfortunately, some of the fairly reliable sources that we used to be able to tap into for helping underwrite the cost of trees have significantly decreased over the last couple of years. Primarily, there used to be a grant program from Alliant that had two funding rounds per year, and you could receive up to $10,000 per round. They've scaled that back to once per year, and now the awards are typically limited to $5,000. So they've reduced by about 75% over what they were even a couple of years ago. So for us to keep up on making sure that we're replacing the trees that we're taking out, we need to have another source of funding to be able to do that. And we're also, because of the Emerald Ash Borer, and it's being identified in several locations around the community, unfortunately, taking out trees at a rate that we've never really seen before. We have a lot more to operate or to take out. So overall, this is the impact for the, ultimate impact for the property owner. Modeling out with a median value on a house, looking at the difference, even with the extra that we'd be proposing to include there in a transit levy, on a median value house, they would have paid $1,307 last year in property taxes that went to the city. That would drop to $1,267 this year, so. Looking at the other changes that you'd have, overall, the utilities actually end up picking up almost that identical difference, so you end up being essentially flat on the amount that's paid for city services year over year for the entire slate of services. Solid waste is the biggest one, with $24, and the urban forest utility comes in second at nine, sanitary sewer at eight, totaling right at 41. And this is hot news that I wanted to bring to the city council's attention. We received a notification that Walmart appealed their valuation, and this was just finalized, and they're looking at a reduction of about 1.14 million in their value. So what does that mean for us? It's about an $8,500 change to the income that we would have. That just came in from the county. If we don't make any changes, it draws the general fund balance down a little bit further from what we had initially recommended. And so we would have a little bit of flexibility to potentially be able to recover that if the council were willing to adjust the rate to be able to, to make sure that we would pull that back in. Thankfully, it doesn't look like it's endemic, or that they're one of 100 that was out there doing an appeal evaluations, but that did just come through. So the only new decision point, other than the ones that we've received prior direction from the council on, are the nighttime transit and the property tax levy change. The publication for maximum property tax levy does have the flexibility in there for the city council to do that, should you choose to do so, but that's entirely up to you collectively as a group. It's not something that we, if you want to stick with your guns and stay flat on the 1422, that any of us are going to fall on our swords over and really buck heads with the council on it. So just wanted to make sure that we at least provided the option.
Can I ask a quick question about that? Are we going to vote? Can you go back one?
Yep.
Are we going to vote on that nighttime transit property tax levy as a separate item?
You'll have the...
How will we weigh in?
Yeah, you'll have the resolution setting the date for the, for the budget hearing, and that notification of public hearing has to include the maximum rate that you're going to be willing to do. But in this case, again, even if we do it at the 1424 that this one shows, if the city council were to decide that you didn't want to do that, you always have that option to scale back. So after you hold the second hearing, if you said, no, we're going to stick with the 1422, you as a council can choose to do that. You simply can't increase it from the second publication. If you want the second publication to go out at the 1422, then we just need to know that as well, and we would publish appropriately heading into the public hearing.
So I guess, just to be clear, if I'm understanding correctly, we would be increasing the transit levy for one person, according to that chart? And you mentioned, you know, if someone gets dropped off because Cedar Rapids begins a later route, and, you know, they can freeze to death in the freezing, in the winter, right? But if Cedar Rapids isn't starting until the summer, no one's going to freeze to death in July. I personally don't feel like I want to, I'm just going to say it now, because I don't realize, I don't know if we're going to have a separate decision. But if Cedar Rapids isn't starting until the summer, no one's going to freeze to death in July. I personally don't feel like I want to, I'm just going to say it now because I don't realize, I don't know if we're going to have a separate discussion on that and I apologize for not bringing it up immediately. But I would rather wait until the demand forces us to do something than just spend that money for one or four people and see if it builds. And so I'd rather let Cedar Rapids go first and see what happens. That's just where I am on it, but I thought I'd put it out there.
Anyone else with thoughts on that?
Well, I'm going to backdoor that. I may come to the same conclusion, but from the standpoint of talking about even increasing it by 1.7 cents. And I know if we look at this, it immediately looks like there's a property tax reduction for the individuals, if you bring up the other screen. But again, the property tax reduction is because of the rollback. And again, I voiced my opinion about the state doing all of the cities an injustice on the rollback, that that needs to be fixed, it needs to be frozen instead of bouncing around. Last year, everybody had an increase because of the rollback. This year, they have a decrease because of the rollback. So from that standpoint, I think most of the citizens cannot break down their bill between what's impacted by the rollback, what's impacted by their valuation increase or change. I think one of the things they look at is what is my levy rate? And I think that gives them some basis of how is the city being managed? Is that levy going up or is that going down? And if it's going up, why is it going up? So from the standpoint, even though, I understand exactly what Renee's saying. I don't know if that's a needed service. If it's a needed service, I'm in complete support of it, but I don't know that, based upon the comments you provided, that it is an absolute service that is going to be essential. When it reaches that point, I'll be in 100% support of it. But I am probably going to be more in support of 1422. So my comment you made earlier about me wanting to make the tax increases, if they're merited, on an incremental basis, will come about when we start having a five-year financial plan and I can see that direction, the vision, and why those increases are taking place so that we do that in a fiscally responsible manner. So from that standpoint, that, you know, I'll, I'll support a 1422 as is and not the increase for that, different, maybe different reasons than Renee, but maybe getting to the same point.
Any other comments?
Okay. So the schedule from here on out, we'll have the public hearing on maximum property taxes on the 20th. And then the final budget, we do the presentation heading into the public hearing. Well, that would be on the 17th and then we'll have the public hearing and budget adoption on the 19th. And then it gets submitted to the state, must be submitted to the state on their form by the 31st of March. So that would wrap up the calendar for the budget for this year.
Okay. Anything further on this topic? Okay, so moving on to number nine?
Yeah, Leanne wanted me to send her apologies. She got called away for some outside business, so I'll be pinch hitting for her on this one. Up for consideration for the city council is a resolution affecting the local option sales tax oversight committee. As council knows, this is one that we've been examining quite a bit and the recommendation from the staff was to shrink it from nine members back to a maximum of seven and then look at changing the meeting schedule. It does still allow flexibility for the chair to be able to call additional meetings as needed throughout the year. But really with the shift in roles and the council being a lot more diligent about adopting a CIP and making priority decisions on projects, the role of the local option sales tax committee really is up or down on whether or not the proposed slate of projects meets the intent of the ballot language and not really related to whether or not a project should be done, but whether it meets the ballot language, so.
Was it ever different from that? Was it ever different from that?
During the initial years, they had a role in the creation of the spending plan because they assisted with doing the publicity for it.
But their main role was still determining if it met the-
Right.
Projects met the ballot language, not deciding whether or not they were worthwhile or they should be done or not.
Correct.
And I think there was confusion about that and I just want to make that clear, that that committee always had a limited role of making sure projects met the ballot language and not deciding on the merit of a project.
The main difference is, is that in the absence of having a CIP, if a change was proposed, each project would get run through the local option sales tax committee for that determination on whether or not it met the ballot language. But now that we have a CIP, we can look forward, we have the money fully programmed over the next five years. So it's essentially one slate of projects that's being proposed.
So what's the resolution going to say?
Let's see, let me pull it back up.
We have it here.
Yeah, it's in the staff report, so.
So it's yearly meetings with the right of the chair to hold special meetings as needed? And seven members.
And I do know that that was an item that I believe you had brought up, Mayor, and I know at least one of their council member was interested in having a discussion about the number of members, about whether seven was appropriate, whether you should look at five. And that's entirely up to the discretion of the city council on how large you feel that committee should be.
Any particular thoughts on that? I know we've had some discussion, but go ahead, Ms. Goodell.
Yeah, I'll weigh in because I wasn't able to participate in that, but I listened to the discussion. And I think as long as we can find enough members, I'm always for people participating. So I think the seven is a good number. I also think that once a year makes good sense, given the way that the staff puts everything together now for us and it also gives the ability for the chair to call additional meetings. So I think what's being proposed is great.
Mr. Stenath, did you have a comment?
Yes, I wanted to weigh in on this one. I actually have served on this committee and as I review this, I'm, I'm comfortable with the new resolution with the exception of a couple of things. I would be in more in favor of moving to a five-member panel. This one does follow its bylaws. Even when I was on this panel and it was a member of nine, it was very difficult for it to find itself to be in quorum. It's difficult to get, to keep these positions filled. It's difficult to get the attendance that's needed to follow that quorum. So in my opinion, I would make a recommendation to staff to move that to even five. In this particular case, as the mayor's pointed out, in the year that I was on this forum or this committee, it was very confusing as to what their role was and what they were voting on and what they weren't voting on. It has now become even more finer detailed and defined as to what it is. It's merely to make sure that it meets the language. I don't think it warrants seven people to come up with a majority to decide yes it does or doesn't fall within the 70-30 split. So I would be in favor of moving that to a member of five. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but I think we're down to two members now and I think we still have several vacancies. This is just a very difficult committee to, to keep seats filled. We appreciate those positions. I was very happy to serve on that when I did. But again, as the city managers rolled out, now with the CIP in the process that the council weighs in on this and the city manager's direction of it, it does, I think, more finely tunes in what this committee is intended for. And the initiation of this was to, to basically just make sure that the ballot language was met through the entire, this is the second cycle for the local option sales tax. So whatever the future may hold for that, for us going, I think would warrant it as well too. So again, again, just going down through here, you know, they do, they do vote on their attendance. Majority does need to be in attendance for their quorum, so it's a critical component. If they're not there, they don't meet their quorum. And if you only meet once a year, it's even going to be more difficult, especially if that's going to be in the wintertime. So that would be something I would like to strongly encourage us to reconsider as we move into just fine tuning this one last time before we can put this one back to rest, so.
Okay, Mr. Jensen?
Yeah, so I mean, previous, I think going from nine to seven is a big improvement, especially given the change in the scope of what they're doing and the reduction in the number of meetings. So I would 100% echo Randy's comments for reducing it because of the reason, the same reasons and going to five as well.
I'd be in favor of going to five. I think I've said seven in the past, but it makes sense. I think you convinced me.
Yeah, I had no idea we only had two people on it right now. That's ridiculous. I mean, yeah, five.
There are other, there are maybe reasons why-
Sure.
We've ended up with just two people, but beyond the purpose of the committee. There are some dynamics and things, but I'm fine with, with reducing it to five. I mean, I think there was some, some question of whether or not we needed the committee at all. I, I tend to agree with what Renee said first, though, was that, you know, if you have people that want to serve, if there are seven people that want to do it, why not? You know, more participation is better. But I'm fine if the general consensus of the council is to make it a committee of five. I'm perfectly, I accept that, so. Does that give you direction? Okay. And then, once we vote on the resolution, I think we already do have some applications. We could seek additional applications.
Yeah, I think we have applications on file and interest. I think we were waiting until this was approved.
Right, and then so we can bring some recommendations for appointments to the council after, after we vote on the resolution and determine how many, how many seats it will be, so, okay? Number 10 is the last item that's marked under administrative services.
I'll pinch hit on this one as well. We are ready to move forward with doing the issuance of the first phase of the financing that's needed for the public services maintenance facility project. This does reflect 50% coming from road use and then 25% each from sanitary sewer and the solid waste utilities. We had solicited quotations from local financial institutions. After looking at the broader bond market and seeing how they would treat something like this with a blended bond and with the quotes that we received from the local financial institutions, it's a very competitive interest rate. But they're also proposing significantly lower costs for issuance. Typically with a revenue bond issuance, you'd have two and a half percent bonding agent fee and then significant legal fees on top of that. With this, you'd avoid the bonding agent fees. And there's also some additional restrictions for revenue bonds of this scope that I don't know that we as staff were fully comfortable with. There's a reserve requirement for how much you have to have in reserve that would prevent the council from being able to tap into that if we needed it for a specific project. And then there's also what they call indenture. And indenture means that as you're proposing rate changes and looking at your budgets, there's an additional layer of review that the bondholders have every year. Doesn't necessarily give them veto authority over it, but there's a lot of additional reporting that comes with it. And so looking at being able to do what's called a placed note, we felt that we had adequate local competition and that the terms being proposed by US Bank were certainly highly competitive of what we'd be likely to get out in the bond market with a revenue note anyway. So recommending to the council that we proceed with that. One item that I would note is that the, the letter, I believe, from US Bank that's included has a higher amount than what's proposed in this coming council action. The main difference is there is that they were giving us a quote for being able to cover not only the cost of the facility, but also any remaining gap for the cost of the equipment. But at this point, they would not treat it as a construction draw. Once the note is done, they will do one disbursement. So rather than incur interest for that whole period of time on the money that would just be sitting there that we would eventually need for the fleet, we felt it was better to split them into two notes, especially given the low closing costs. So we would do this one and then, once we get ready to do the financing for the fleet, that would come back as a separate loan agreement.
Questions, discussion?
So just one clarification. So I understand all of the points you made and they sound very good from a financial, financial planning standpoint. But from the interest rate, are you saying that the interest rate that the bank is providing us, that US Bank is providing us would be in the same ballpark or very close to what a revenue bond would be then?
It's pretty close because they're proposing a fixed rate. And, and looking at some of the revenue notes that are out there right now, your first year might be 1.9, but by year 10, you'd be paying 2.6, 2.7. So you look at the difference between the two and it really is fairly minimal.
I also like the standpoint that it gives you more flexibility because you're dealing with a bank and not a bond market. So you've got more flexibility on early payoff and some other items that may, we may be able to take advantage of down the road. So from that standpoint, it makes a lot of sense to me.
And, and in the bond market, they're generally not going to entertain the option of monthly payments. Monthly payments would allow us to reduce principal and interest down more quickly than doing the twice-a-year payments that you would typically see in the bond market.
Is there a action item for Thursday on this?
We were waiting to see if we were quite ready for that, waiting on legal to have everything ready to go. If it's not, then it would be deferred until the first meeting in March. But we wanted you to be aware of it, be aware that it was coming, that, yeah. And we passed the public hearing authorizing us to issue the debt for the project quite a while ago. So that piece has already been met.
Okay. On page four, there are a couple of items under administrative services that are not marked, if anyone would like to discuss those at all. Lon, would you, the item on Willis Dade and Marion Cares and Four Oaks, would you just remind us what the source of those funds are?
Yeah, those are coming from the low to moderate income housing set aside. When we did the Connection Avenue project, because that was a market rate housing-related TIF district, we had to set aside about $300,000 to be used to benefit low to moderate income residents. All of these are related to services for like housing prevention, shelter support for that benefit low to moderate income. But we're required to use those dollars to benefit-
Housing assistance, not prevention.
Yep. We are requ-
Okay. All right, just want to make sure everybody understood the source of those funds. Okay. There are more questions on those two items, then we'll move on to engineering. Mr. Barkle is all ready to go.
Yep. So in your council packet, there's an 11 by 17 that kind of shows all the projects' timelines. So this is at least a draft. This is a document that gets modified as we go through the construction year. And then there's a 14-page document that becomes our, basically our newsletter that we send out and we update that weekly once construction gets going. So I kind of blew up part of the 11 by 17 showing all the projects. So total, it's about 49.5, 49 and a half million dollars worth of projects. Some of that might be minor items to finish a project. Some of it might be, we're just getting a project started or it might be a full reconstruction that we're going to do the, the next year. So it's, some of these projects span multiple years. So it's not all being done in one year, but we might be touching that project in some way, whether it's staff or a consultant that we're hiring to do that project. For example, Tower Terracida Albernate is likely going to be going on for three to four years as we phase it and build it in sections. So that $9.3 million isn't going to all be spent next year. I don't know if there's any questions about any of the particular projects. There's a little write-up on most of the projects in there. If there is specific projects, we're doing the HMA program. We'll do two of them this year. Last year's that we're catching up on and then this year. There are several reconstruction projects, continuing Central Corridor. We have our mini roundabout at 10th and 10th, our signals at 35th and 7th. We still have our signals that we're finishing at Hennessy and 13. We have some projects that we're still doing contract negotiations, like the 10th Avenue Side Pass. That's the, basically the trails on both sides of Business 151 that would go from 35th down to Walmart. So there's a lot of projects that are in different phases. And then it's also not just engineering, you know, obviously working with other departments on these projects as well.
With a full plate?
I would also note that they started clearing the trees for the railroad viaduct on 7th Avenue.
They have.
So they are actually in there, so obviously everyone should be aware of that and be careful. That's, gets to be kind of tight in there when they're moving equipment around in there.
Yeah, so that, for that, what they'll do is they'll cut all the trees down, so we have a couple endangered bats that they have to do that before April, and so likely they'll just be laying there, and then later in August, then they'll actually likely do some of that work. There's a possibility, depending on the weather, that they might get in there sooner, but again, all projects are weather and utility dependent.
It's good that they're getting started. Any further, any questions for Mike on all this? So, for Thursday, there'll just be a vote to receive and file?
Yeah, so this is our basic work program that then we work off of for the year. Most of these projects, we're in the CIP, and that's where the, the funding comes from, but this just outlines how we're going to tackle these projects. So, you'll see similar work programs from other departments as they get those done, but this is, again, our starting point. Just like the one from last year, there'll be projects that pop up that we had no idea were going to be on there. Example would be Irish Drive, or this year, we're, we're helping the fire department out with their driveway in front because the aerial's busting that up, so that's a project that got added.
Okay. Okay. Any further comments or questions for Mike on that before we move on to number two?
So number two is the project calendar for A Avenue Reconstruction. So this is a complete reconstruction from South 11th to South 15th. This does also include sanitary sewer, just because the existing sanitary sewer is so shallow that those services are going to conflict with the storm sewer. There's also some water main that's going to be done as part of that, and so the water department does reimburse the city for that water main work, so we just get the project done, and then they cut us a check when we're done with that. And then we're going to take some of the money that we would have used for the sanitary sewer replacement for the manholes because we're going to redo the sewer here and make it from five foot deep to eight-plus feet deep, so it would serve properly. And so we'll take some of that money out of that, and then some of the money is also coming out of the Neighborhood Street Improvement Program, that's Local Option Sales Tax. It has a start date of June 22nd, 55 working days, and liquidated damages of $500 per day. The engineer's estimate is $615,000. And we'll obviously have to stage it so that those residents on Sorry Drive still have access.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's in and out. It's an only way in and out.
Fire and police don't like it if we cut off the access.
Or the residents.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure they'll all be happy to have the street finished when it's done, though. Any questions on this? Okay, we'll be voting to approve the project calendar on Thursday. All right. Is that it, Mike?
That's it.
All right, on to community, community development. We have two items on page four that are not marked for discussion, but if anyone would like to discuss those, I know we've talked about these in the past. We good? Number three, Mr. Trey Harn?
Yes, Your Honor, on Thursday, there'll be a public hearing regarding an amendment to the zoning code, which establishes the ability for the Planning Commission to direct staff in lieu of placing signs in every property of a rezoning to place them in public buildings. This is primarily in the event of large-scale rezoning requests. We would only do this in, in limited circumstances. A couple circumstances would be, one, if like we're doing, is currently rezoning the entire city, or two would be upon annexation to the city, if you get a county subdivision, which we've never zoned, and you had to zone them, that would require, our code currently requires a sign to be placed in every one of their front yards, which is a, doesn't make any sense. We always place signs at the entrances of subdivisions and such when we've done it in the past, and, and so this just provides an opportunity for us to do all of our other notifications. Everybody will still get a postcard, signs will still be posted in the vicinity in most instances, and then this just provides us to place signs in public buildings prior to the, the hearing of Planning Commission and Council, just so there's, just so it's known. This also requires us to go to the commission before the zoning and say, hey, we're going to be doing this zoning, and we'd like to do this in lieu of signs. So you're going to, there'll be notice of this essentially three months before it hits council, so.
So on a case-by-case basis, there'll be requests to?
Yeah, this will, generally this will come from staff. It'll be like, listen, if we're going to do this rezoning, it's going to rezone 50 properties per code, we'd have to go out and post it in everyone's front yard. A lot of cities don't have this in their code, it's a courtesy measure, just like our requirements are for notifications, it's purely policy, the way that we do it. You've heard us say that at public meetings, we send postcards to those within 250 feet of the rezoning. That's, that's not code, but our code does say that we'll post a sign in the rezoning, and we like that because if you're a neighbor, you want your property, your neighbor's going to rezone it, we like that that's posted. That's a good thing. So, we're certainly not trying to circumvent anything, but we just want to provide the opportunity to abide by the code when we do a large-scale rezoning and not spend a whole lot of money to post a bunch of signs. So this is just the option that we work with legal on to come up with. We would certainly let the council know when it comes forward if that's something that was done ahead of time, too, so.
And that's part of the procedure in the, in the ordinance?
No, the, the procedure in the ordinance is that the Planning Commission would direct us, we would ask the Planning Commission, they would say yes.
Okay, so it at least gets to Planning Commission?
Yeah.
It's not just at the discretion or, okay, all right. And, and all the other notification processes are still in place, it's only replacing putting a sign in everybody's yard?
Yes, I, I would say that.
Which I don't think the neighborhood would want that either.
In the event of that, count of the citywide rezoning, we're, we're not going to notice every property on the rezoning. So that's, that's, but generally, if it's a, whatever the size of it generally is, I mean, we, we sent it to everyone and then the adjacent property owners, it's just, it's a little overbearing to try and do that for the entire city.
Okay, any questions, comments, concerns on that?
No.
I know we've brought it up before, so it's been part of the discussion in the past, but anything? Number four is not marked, well, number four is the ordinance. Moving on to library, we have an update regarding the library building project.
Good evening, Your Honor and Council. That update actually is going to be Thursday night, so that one we'll do on Thursday night. The second item under library is a resolution approving the amendment to our architect's agreement. This is a scope change on what we're asking the architect to do, but it does not change our overall budget. This is work that was planned for the library project, all of our technology and AV design work. Originally, that was set aside, and the architect assumed that that was something that we were going to contract directly with the library on, and we have, we prefer that that go through the architect with all of the rest of the design that we're doing with the building. So again, this, this dollar amount was already planned for, the work was already planned for, but we're just amending their contract to make sure that they are the ones that are going to oversee that design for us when we move into this detailed design phase.
Is that clear? Questions, discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us, brings us to the conclusion of the meeting, unless there's anyone else that has anything to, to add or bring up? Staff, anything? Okay, meeting's adjourned, and we'll see everyone on Thursday. Thank you.